So let's get started with our special joint meeting of the council and the commission. And since this is a separate meeting from the council meeting that we just adjourned, I'll ask for a roll call of all those presence in the combined group.
Councilmember Candell.
I'm here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Mayor Harrow.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Chalmers.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kuntler.
Here.
Commissioner Swisher.
Here.
And Chair Wagstaff.
Here.
I'll note that Vice Mayor Helmer and Planning Commissioner Talber are absent.
Okay, thanks. Well, we certainly have a quorum. And we'll move on as a matter of regular order to item number two, which is public comment. And again, this is public comment to provide an opportunity for the public to address both the city council and planning commission regarding the items that are not on the agenda for this special meeting. And as we did with the county or council meeting, if there are members of the public who wish to speak on any such item, please be on the call, state your name, full name, please. We will limit any comments to three minutes as we did before. This is not a matter where we can, we can respond specifically to public comment, but we certainly welcome it tonight. And with that, I'll ask Allison if we have any members of the public.
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emailed comments. And there is no public comment.
Okay. But with that, we'll conclude the public comment part of our agenda and move to which an item number three, which are business items. We have two. The first one, 3.1, is a presentation from our staff and from the EMC planning group, which has been very helpful in working with us in preparing our housing element for 2024 to 2020, 2032. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to staff for a report and let us know how you want to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan Schwartz, City Manager. I've been reflecting on how to kick off what in some respects, just from the fact that we're having a joint meeting for the first time in several years of the planning commission and the city council is a historic moment. But I'm getting to the point in my career where I've done these types of things multiple times. And I could truly say this housing element cycle is unique. The confluence of two major things have come about that I think are going to start a conversation tonight that will be very meaningful to Larkspur now and Larkspur over the next many years. And I'm specifically speaking to one, the fact that we've been asked to figure out how to accommodate a significant number of new units, affordable units in Larkspur. And that's no easy task because we're a community that's substantially built out. And so you will be starting tonight that process of thinking about where Larkspur can grow, where we can reimagine our community. The second thing is that the state rules have changed and they've changed, I think, in a way that is asking communities to take a step back and ask about how you became the community you are and what type of community you're going to be going forward. And it's going to be through the lens of what Assembly Bill 686 defines as affirmatively furthering fair housing. This is an important topic and you're going to hear a bit about that tonight because it's a part of this process that's different than any housing element in the past. And it's something that all of us will need to reflect on as we go throughout this conversation. Tonight is at the 10,000 foot level. We're not diving into where we're going to put specific units or what might happen on a particular property. Tonight, you're going to hear from the EMC planning group first and really hear what the processes that we're going to go through as a community and how they're going to guide us through that process and what the opportunities are for you as the leaders of our community and what opportunities are for the members of our community to be engaged. And community is something we need to rethink a little bit, too. We get very focused on who lives here. And one of the important things that you're going to hear about tonight that I think is really exciting is we're going to look at our daytime population, too. Who comes here and works here? And why is it that they have to travel so far to work here? Why can't they also live here? That's a tough topic that we haven't addressed in this context with this ones before. The second presentation you're going to hear is from the county staff who have been working on a collaborative process to support all of the communities as they work on their housing element and specifically on some of the topics that I've just mentioned. So what we'd like to propose tonight is that EMC planning group begins, they're going to do a presentation for you. They've created a number of stop points during the presentation where they can open it up to the council and the planning commission for questions about where you want to clarify the material you just heard. At the end of their presentation, we suggest then you open up the conversation to the community as well and hear from everybody. And then after we've done that, we'll hear a presentation from the county and then have another round of conversations. So I think that will be the most efficient approach this evening.
Sounds fine.
So with that, I see Andy Flower, at least on my screen, he's kind of in the middle. And so he's going to take over and introduce who he's brought with him this evening. This is Andy Flower, who's our lead, our project manager and principal from EMC planning group. Andy, take it away.
To Dan, I appreciate that introduction and a little bit of information about what we'll be presenting this evening. I've heard today that my, my voice sounds a little low. I want to check in. Does it sound low?
Sounds fine to me.
Thank you. So with that, I'd like to introduce our team here tonight. We have Lauren Herr, also from EMC planning group. And we have Tyrone Baffo, who is from Circle Up. And he is our equity educator, part of our team. We've got a full, robust team. And, and tonight, you've, you've got the three of us. And with that, I would like to share my screen. And is that okay if I do that?
Yes, please. There it is.
Yes. So Mayor Harrow, council members and planning commissioners, we are honored to be here with you this evening and to, to be a part of this process with you. We understand it's a rare treat that, that all of you are coming together and we look forward to the discussion. Our purpose tonight will be to help all of you understand, the public understand the council and planning commissioners' role for the sixth cycle housing element. We're going to go a little bit through the components and new requirements. Our regional housing needs allocation specific to Larkspur. And just, we're going to dip in just a little bit with context and data. You'll also see a little more of that with the county presentation. We're going to touch on project timeline and key milestones and discover a few tools of many that we'll be using for inclusive public engagement. In the end, we're hoping that you provide feedback and questions to staff and us to help with our iterative steps in this process. So our agenda, we have it numbered here. And as Dan mentioned, we're going to take a pause between each of these subject matters so that we can answer any questions that you might have. So we'll begin with the housing element overview. We'll talk a little bit about equity. And we want to make sure that we're leading with equity and we'll get to that in a minute about this important focus throughout this entire process. Then we'll get to RENA and site inventory process, project schedule, key milestones, our public engagement process and the questions and feedback. So beginning with the housing element overview, we're going to begin with the basics because we want to make sure to involve everyone who's just joining us. And we'll make sure to do that with our website and throughout our entire process. Our goal with this sixth cycle housing element update is to involve as many people as possible through the process. So to be clear, this housing element is a plan for housing, for the housing needed in a community, both existing housing needs and future housing needs. And that is anticipated by the, by ABA, the Association of Bay Area Government. So this is an update that is required by state law. The update occurs every eight years. And we also think it's, we understand it's very important that we make it clear to the public that this isn't promising that Larkspur will build the housing. It's that we create the programs and policies and we, we find the locations where the community would like to see housing built in the future, in this next eight-year cycle. So here's a list of the key components of the housing element. We'll begin with an analysis of housing needs and evaluation of constraints, identification of sites to meet the allocated number of housing. We'll then have a housing plan with goals, policies, programs, and quantified objectives. We want to make sure that we focus on affirmatively furthering fair housing and public engagement. So our public engagement will be robust throughout this entire process. So the keys, the key roles for drafting housing element, we're working with HCD early on and throughout the process, we'll be checking in with them with our strategies and our drafts. We're also working with the Marin County Collaborative and they are helping to provide some support that is very helpful. It's also good to understand what's going on in the region and to pull that, those threads into our tapestry as often as we can. Our group itself is robust and diverse. We have all kinds of expertise coming in to help out with all of, all of the necessary pieces and parts of the, of the housing element. We'll be working with staff and throughout, we'll be using our website and doing as much outreach as we can. We want to be able to work with community groups and we, we want to make this process available to all who would like to participate. And Dan, I liked your, your mention of the daytime population. I think that's brilliant. And if we've got people who are already part of the community of Larkspur, why wouldn't we then embrace them in helping to come up with a solution for maybe reducing traffic so that they can actually live in Larkspur? So to be clear about the approval steps for certified housing element, we'll be bringing a plan through the planning commission for recommendation to town council, excuse me, city council, where it will then be approved and will go to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for certification. There's a slide from HCD that helps to describe some of the initial steps in analysis with the data, discussion of the data, and how we then come to the place of, of presenting resources, programs, and strategies. So I want to stop there and check in with the planning commissioners and council members. Mayor, are there any questions with this first segment of the presentation?
Lovely. No, thank you. Thank you very much for getting us started. This is going to be very interesting and helpful. And I don't think we really need to observe any particular protocols about who goes first. Are there any questions or comments at this point from any members of either the council or the commission? Not seeing any raised hands. So I think we're, we're good to go.
Very good. Leading with equity. We have a new legislation with this housing element, AB 686 for affirmatively furthering fair housing. And the text of this law is, is that all jurisdictions are required to take meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protected characteristics. It's important to understand that this is a through thread, meaning we need to pursue this update through the lens of affirmatively furthering fair housing from the point of gathering data and understanding what the needs are through to coming up with the sites that are appropriate and the policies that are appropriate. And we also need to weave in a new section that is actually called meaningful actions. And we need for those meaningful actions to tie back to what we understand through our assessment of need. And I, I want to be clear here, too, that what we've heard from HCD when we look to the revision request letters that are coming from HCD to the Southern California cities who had deadlines before Northern California cities. And most of the recommendations for revision were centered around this focus. So it cannot be stressed enough how inclusive we need to be and how it is in our best interest. And of course, it's in the community's best interest. And and we look forward to bringing that together with you. It, it means that there's, there's going to be a lot of new, a lot of new people joining the process, a lot of new processes to involve as many people as possible. And, and we're going to try to have fun with it. Even though this is an activity that a lot of people may be a little scared of when we talk about the numbers of units that are required, the place of local action is, is in coming up with how we get to that, how we get to the solution. So the assessment of fair housing within the housing element, these are the required factors that fair housing outreach and enforcement capacity is discovered. There's an analysis of segregation and integration patterns and trends, research into disparities for access to opportunities and a recognition of disproportionate housing needs. And finally, displacement risk mitigation. Oh, I, I did want to mention that this link is the same link that was shared with the council and commissioners. And this is a guidance document. We encourage all of you to take a look at it at, at your leisure and, and to work with us through there, through this process. We certainly are open and inviting of any suggestions to be as inclusive as possible and to meet these standards. I see that Councilmember Way has your hand up.
Hi, Andy. Thank you. I have a question as to what are examples of meaningful actions that you can give us to understand better what a meaningful action is by specific example?
That's a great question. And we're working with Veronica Tam from the county, who you'll hear a little bit more about when the county presents. And she's going to be sharing with us a lot about her experience in Southern California for exactly this. So we want to make sure that we're not, we want to make sure that we're not just tacking things on or pointing to solutions that are in need of a problem. In other words, we need to make sure that our meaningful actions are derived from our, our clear understanding of the needs at hand. But it does help to look at what, it does help in that process of coming up with solutions to look at and see what other cities are doing, to see if, if they, if those ideas can resonate with the city of Larkspur. So we'll certainly be doing that. That will be part of our process.
And just one other question before you move on is that when I attended the League of California Cities meeting in September, there was a lot of discussion of AB 686 and, and AB nine and 10, or SB nine and 10. But one of the questions came up is what is our, what definition are we using? That, what is the equity definition? And is there, that, is there a baseline definition that's been agreed upon by AB 686, what the definition of equity is?
This is the short definition of it. But as I mentioned, we do have that, we do have that link that takes you to a full guidance document. It can't really be encapsulated in a few words.
I'll look that up. Thank you.
Sure.
And, and just as we move forward, I want to take advantage of the way the presentation tonight is structured. And a number of stop points that we'll have in the course of the presentation. And if members of the council and, and the commission could wait until we get to those stop points so that everybody can chime in at the same time, that'd be helpful. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. We have two more slides in this section. So as I mentioned, Veronica Tam is working through the county to offer collaborative assistance for all, all jurisdictions within Marin County. And we've been introduced to her and she's fantastic. And she's done a lot of work for housing elements. And she is not only going to be providing us some ideas, but she's also, as, as part of her contract with the county, there will be a few points where she will be reviewing our proposal. So, so we are situated well to, to thrive with this challenge. We'll also be working Circle Up. And as I mentioned, we have Tyrone Baffo with us this evening. We're very fortunate to have him on our team. I believe he's working with the city of Larkspur and some other capacities involving equity education as well. And so he may be familiar to you. And, and yes. So we'll have him speak here in just one moment. And we'll also be working with the HCD throughout our process. So we'll, we'll have check-in points. We have access to an HCD representative specific to Marin County. So we'll be checking in, of course, with council along the way. But we want to let you know that we've, we've got a full team here, a full bench, and, and we'll be well situated to provide what is, is needed. And with this, Tyrone, if, if you could, if you could share a little bit on, relative to this slide for both the housing element and maybe to open up people's minds also for the county presentation that will be coming after ours.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tyrone Baffo. I'm the co-founder of Circle of Education. And it is such an honor to be working with the city of Larkspur as well as with EMC. And, and so our capacity, we're going to be providing a lot of support when it comes to actually some of the questions that were just posed around, how does, what does equity look like within this project? When we think about the different types of meaningful actions that, or even just the, the main intentions of the work that's going to be happening, making sure that there are really strong links between the ideas, the proposals, and the direction that the project goes in and making sure that we're actually able to kind of, not quite reverse engineer, but really ask ourselves, are the steps and the actions that we're taking actually going to produce the desired outcomes and results? And I know that that might sound like a very simple process, but I can't tell you the amount of times that we've actually worked with cities and institutions across the country where that one piece around having really good intentioned ideas and, and plans that are in place that quite often have cost a lot of money for different municipalities. But yet those projects might not have produced the desired outcomes on the other end. And that's where being able to bring in the community, as Andy had mentioned, to be able to hold different types of focus groups, to be able to make sure that we're, we clearly understand what our goals are, what our intentions are, and that, and that all of the different plans and ideas actually are going to have a high probability of producing the outcomes. And there's a lot of assessment that comes into play with that process. So, you know, this slide here, I really appreciate because it talks a little bit about the process that we go through throughout different steps of working on this project. And, you know, setting the intentions and the goals, of course, in alignment with the different parameters and expectations set by AB 686. So we're, we're able to ask ourselves, what are, what are our goals? What do we hope for? What is the community asking for? How do we balance the different needs that are coming up throughout this process? And then also being able to assess the potential impact. And this is really where we're, you know, we're running scenarios, thinking about if we make a decision to do ABCD, how are those, how does that impact current residents? How does that impact potential residents that might be wanting to move and live within the city limits? And, and also impacting different types of factors as well, like been mentioned, such as environmental factors. And then the action piece, again, looking at before action is taken, really being able to link back and, and try to do our, our best and our due diligence to make sure that we don't end up doing all of this work and then end up having pushback and don't end up accomplishing our goals. And so, so our goal will be providing different types of consulting and high-level support, being able to kind of step in in different parts throughout the project just to help support with the decision-making and making sure that, that equity is, is happening throughout this process. But then also being able to hold spaces for some of those more difficult conversations where, where we're able to actually kind of have deeper conversations with the community around concerns, around needs, around some of the challenges and being able to hear different voices and hold that space for that. And so that's a little bit about what, what this slide is talking about is that that relationship between what we want, our plan to make it happen, and if we're actually able to make that happen or not. And making sure that we do our due diligence beforehand and make sure that there's really great alignment. And so we're throughout the whole process that we're kind of creating checks and balances. And, and that's what we'll be supporting, supporting the city with and also EMC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyrone. So Mayor Harrow, this is the point at which we're open to questions and comments.
Okay. Good. Well, thank you for that very informative presentation, getting us started on this, on this discussion. So this is an opportunity now for members of the council to ask questions or provide comments on what we've just heard before we go into the next section of the presentation. So do I see anything from the council at this point? Not seeing anything. There may be further questions when we get to the next break, so.
I actually, this is, this is Brock Wagstaff. I had a couple of quick questions.
Okay, go ahead, Brock. I'm not seeing on my screen, so that's why I didn't mention that.
Yeah, and I don't know, I tried to raise the hand thing, but anyway. It said I did, but it didn't evidently show up.
We are on now.
Okay. Within all this, presumably there's an analysis of transportation needs as well as housing needs. Because I think one of the big puzzles is how you move these people around when you have pretty much one road that goes through a lot of communities. And and I guess the other question is, just out of curiosity, what happens if we don't meet the housing element requirements?
Well, those are great questions. I, I, I can say that, yes, we will be looking at the safety element generally. That is a requirement with AB 379, I believe. And we'll also be looking through the, through the lens of social justice so that when we're looking at sites, potential sites, we want to be sure that those sites that are chosen are, are not those, for instance, that are endangered with climate change over time, things like that. And to answer your third question, we did include a link from HCD, a two-page document that talked about potential consequences of not meeting the housing element deadline. And I would be happy to share that with you again, if, if you don't have that in your records, but it is part of the, it is part of today's staff report. In, in general, just as an overview, a locality loses power over time. And, and there is a, a risk of lawsuits from many different directions, not just HCD and the enforcement arm that they have initiated this year. You would also run the risk of lawsuits from developers, from property owners, from the public at large. So there, there are many consequence, and, and the, the final consequence would be receivership. In other words, if, if the, the HCD is positioning itself to be able to come into a community and take over the process of drafting that next housing element.
Okay, thank, thank you, Andy. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Andy, if I could just chime in before you move on, a lot of the consequences that Andy's talking about, Brock, are ones we've known for years, right? We couldn't quite meet our numbers. Here is the consequence, which Larkspur's always been able to meet our, our numbers requirement. I do think the, the new question will be, as I understand it, and Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, on the, the new on the the new requirements under AB 686, the affirmatively affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement, HCD is returning the housing element to the community for more work when they're not satisfied. So that they haven't yet defined a consequence there because they've asked communities to to take another stab at it. So we're still on virgin ground with that new requirement.
Yes, and even those cities in Southern California who attempted to sue HCD for this for these requirements with the six cycle housing element update, they have now at least one community I'm thinking of in particular, they now have a certified housing home. So what we're seeing in Southern California cities, even those who thought that they would sort of stand their ground against the state and and bring in lawyers. They now hold a certified housing.
And this is Sky Woodruff, the city attorney, just to to build on a couple of things that have been said, particularly Dan's comment that some of some of the remedies are not new ones. They're ones that have been in place for for many years. But but to to also expand on what Andy said about litigation is that really the ultimate remedy for not having a housing element that has been approved by HCD is that people with an interest in the future of development in the community can file litigation against the city. If they ultimately prevail before a trial court and before appellate courts, if appeals are filed and all appeals are exhausted, the trial court has the authority to effectively take control over all aspects of land use approval in Larkspur, which means it can prevent the city council from approving things that it would like to approve. It can compel the city council to approve things that it thinks should be approved, and that would include affordable housing projects that it believes will advance meeting the the city's arena requirements. And it also includes requiring the the city council to take action to amend local law to further the development of housing that meets the 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 city's arena requirements. And failure to do to take actions where the court orders the city council to do that would put the members of the city council at under threat of contempt of court. So that's then, but to Dan's point, these are not new. These are, this has basically been the ultimate penalty for not having a compliant housing element for my entire legal career, but they remain in place in addition to everything else that is coming along as the legislature also increases HCD's role in review and approval of housing elements.
Yeah, hi, this is Natasha Chalmers. I have a follow-up question on that. Has that has, hi, has that have these consequences and remedies actually ever been enforced? I mean, you say they've been around for a long time. Has the HCD ever come in and actually stepped into the shoes of the city council and taken over their role?
Well, HCD is not authorized to do that, at least not yet. But 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 trial courts have ruled against cities that did not have compliant housing elements and have taken various degrees of control over the approval of development proposals in cities.
Okay, so it has happened.
Yes, it's not a mere, it's not a mere speculative or phantom threat. It's one that courts have actually implemented.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
I have a, I've got a couple of a couple of questions. I'm going to save this for the.
Go ahead, just, is this Daniel?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. Go ahead. Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, so I just want to follow up a little bit on on Brock's initial question, which was which was about transit. And obviously, we've had discussion about transit-oriented development over the last several years. There's been a little bit of a one-way street where, yes, you know, there are certain certain combinations that have to be made for development within transit-accessible areas. However, what I was wondering is, is there anything in the action plans that would give incentives to the Transit Authority of Marin to actually assist us in in implementing in implementing housing? Because it's very, very difficult to to give incentives to develop an area if there is no transit, but well, fine, well, what is the Transit Authority of Marin going to do about it? And what are we going to do to to actually encourage them to perhaps further develop transit alternatives in order to support our housing, our our housing element? And then my second thing has to do with the with the enforcement. Yeah, I understand that a trial court can compel certain actions on the part of the city council. But what the trial can't court cannot do is compel a developer to actually invest and develop. And that would, it occurs to me that that might be one of our major stumbling blocks is that, yeah, we can, you know, we've got areas where we would think would be a good idea to develop, but we haven't been able to find any developers to actually proceed. So those are my my two, you know, comments or questions, but I'm really curious what your reaction would be to the transit question.
May. Commissioner Councillor, your your point and question and question is music to my ears personally for the policy that we're hoping to that we're planning to to bring to you for further discussion following our our site inventory analysis and and a little bit in tandem with it. There are some incredible incentives for for transportation investment and for housing investment. There is certainly a through path for both of those, and I look forward to sharing more of that information with you as we move forward.
Thank you.
Anything else, Daniel? Any any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor Harof.
Commission. I I just wanted to to note a cup, one thing real quick on the question about incentives and consequences. You I just wanted to point out that in the staff report, there are two graphics that are attached to the staff report that that talk specifically about that. They're they're very general in nature, but they touch upon some of the different elements of both incentives and consequences. And what's striking on the 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 consequences for non-compliance that are identified in the in the charts. Courts will have specified authorities to impose monetary penalties that can be increased depending upon consideration of different factors by the court. According to the chart, up to a factor of six. I'm not sure what the baseline of the penalties would be with it, that that penalty would be multiplied by, but the the potential for financial penalties is, I think, something that's a bit new. And it's something that we should be aware of. And again, although courts have had authority all along to pursue certain remedies, and Sky, correct me if I'm wrong, it it's not clear to me that there's been statutory authority to allow courts to essentially appoint a receiver. If if that push comes to shove on that issue and essentially take the whole process away from the city, am I missing that?
I'm actually not sure if there is a statutory authorization for it that's separate from the court's equitable power to to impose remedies that it believes will result in legal compliance.
That was confusing about the about the slide then, because that's what I thought the implication was.
I believe that 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 it is identified as a remedy, but I'm actually not sure if it's if it's a separate statutory provision or not. I can certainly check into that and get back to you about it.
It'd be helpful to know if there is is some specific way in which that's addressed by the legislature in these in these bills. And but I'm I'm, am I wrong? Am I wrong about the issue about financial penalties? And the capacity to increase them, that's into something new.
I believe that I believe that is, I believe the multiplier is new. Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I just would encourage everyone to just take a quick look again. The summary that's in the staff report is a useful kind of guide to what's already on the books and what may or may not be on the books in terms of the authority of the agencies and the courts to to impose consequences for failure to comply with state law. Anything else from the council or the commission? And you may want to put your hand your hand down for now. Thanks. Well, not seeing any. Let's get it back to the to the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Harof. I do want to mention also that I will be making, we will be making that that sheet that discusses incentives and consequences, we will be including that in our in our website.
Okay, thank you.
So next we'll be talking about regional housing needs allocation or RENA, which I'm I'm sure all of you are familiar with. But we want to be inclusive and make sure that we start from the beginning here. And we describe what it is, a target number for homes needed assigned by to Bay Area region by California Department of Housing and Community Development. The Association of Bay Area Governments, or AABAG, assigns specific arenas to each county and municipality. So for for the city of Larkspur, we know that the total is 979. And if that feels like a big number, that's good reason. This is a 742% increase from from the last RENA cycle. It's it's a large number. And within that number, we can see what amount of housing is is that we need to allocate, find capacity for within the city at different income levels. And it's significant. It's not impossible. I'm sure we'll get through this together. When we talk about low income, I think it's important also to be mindful of what that means. You'll see this table again when the with the county presentation, but I I think it can't be seen too often. It's it's a little shocking. It was for me when I first saw it, to understand what it is to be low income in Marin County. So when we talk about housing for folks who are experiencing extremely low income, low income, very low income, moderate, these are the numbers. These are the income levels that we're talking about. And while it's it's it feels extreme from last last cycle, from the fifth to the sixth cycle, I I did want to share this slide that shows that the tenure cycle between 1980 and 1990 was proportionally probably larger, given the time, given the era. And we do understand that the RENA methodology this round was really focused on, well, it was focused on a whole lot of things, but some of the determinants included high resource areas. Meaning if you have an area that has access to good schools, well, then that was that was part of the methodology and discovering where housing should be allocated for these different income levels. There was also an acknowledgement or a recognition that in some of those high resource areas in the past three cycles, there has been, you know, relatively or proportionately less requirements for for these arenas for the regional housing needs allocations. So in in addition to the 979, I I want to go ahead and plant a seed here so that it's not a surprise later on down the road. There's also a buffer that's recommended by HCD, a buffer to the 979. Is a recommendation of 15 to 30%. Now, it doesn't mean you have to. But but the thing is, is that if developed sites throughout this eight-year cycle don't meet the anticipated affordability levels, which we need to project as we put together our site inventory analysis, then a mid-cycle re-identification of capacity will be required. So it's really in the city's best interest to have more sites understood as available for capacity to meet these standards than just the 979 base number. Here's a quick look at where we are now, at least as of 2020. This doesn't account for development in in this year, 2021. And we can see that in the end, Larkspur didn't quite meet that the required number. The total 132. There we are 54 units shy of that. So the good news here is that this doesn't count against against us. Instead, this has been incorporated into the methodology for RENA. So I'm going to go through just a few slides here that just share some demographic information. And and as I do, I I I want to preface this by saying it's it's great that AABAG has provided a lot of this data for us. And now what we need to do is is look at it and think about what is the story behind the data? Because that's what HCD is interested in, in part because that leads us to the story of equity. So if we can understand who lives here, and yeah, so this is just the beginning of it. So we'll get some background. Oops, let me get back there. So as far as ownership versus rental, we can see that in comparison with Marin County and the Bay Area generally, there's there's a little more rental here in in Larkspur. And by age category, we can we can see here the difference between the owner occupied and the renter occupied. And these statistics, we can we can also share on our website and request that people make comments. You can see up above are the actual numbers of households that are in each of these categories. In in our experience, it appears to us that that Larkspur skews maybe a little younger. You've got over 1,000 folks living here between ages 45 and 54, but I guess maybe I'm being biased because that's in my age range, so I can think of that as younger. So here, as far as unit types, we can see here that most of the rental, most of the rental tenure is here in the multifamily housing. And it's quite significant that you've got 2,935 multifamily units. That's not very typical in Larkspur-sized communities within Marin County. So just to give just a quick graph about what that means. So over 52%, well, around 52% of households within Larkspur live in multifamily units, while 40% live in single-family detached. We also have 6% that are single-family attached, and that's like townhomes. Some people like to put townhomes in the category of missing middle. That might be a phrase that you've heard before, and if not, we'll be sure to describe what that means and and share some examples of what that means. That's often the category that that can meet those affordability numbers. And then 2% in multi in mobile homes and and less than 2% living in other like RVs or boats, things like that. So as far as cost burden, this was a little surprising to me to understand how just how many folks are cost burdened in in the city of Larkspur. So we've got owner occupied and renter occupied, and you can see that as 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 owner occupied, you've got 14.3% that are cost burdened, who earn between 30 and 50%, oh, excuse me, who's who spend between 30 and 50% on housing, and you've got over 16% of homeowners who are cost burdened. With renters, you've got over 24% of folks who are cost burdened at the rate of more than 50% of their income being used for housing. And nearly 24% who are spending between 30 and 50%. And here I sorry. And it's also important for us to understand when the the houses were built as as a trend in the city of Larkspur, and we can see that the bulk of housing was really built between 1960 and 1979. If you haven't been a renter in the recent past, you might be surprised to see just how much rents have gone up. And we can see here too that relative to Marin County and the Bay Area generally, Larkspur is is even higher than those averages. So I apologize. This is this is my cost burden slide. I think I got ahead of myself with that former slide. I do apologize. I think I got ahead of myself with that former slide. I do apologize. And I, I do have an overview for a cost burden. 40% of Larkspur households are cost burdened due to the percentage of income spent for housing costs. And here we have over a thousand Larkspur households pay more than 50% of their income for housing, while another thousand pay between 30 and 50% of their house, of their income for housing. So I'm going to end on this slide with our, just touch on demographic information for Larkspur. And, and this is one of our compelling questions right now is, is why isn't there more diversity? Because we've, we've got a large, well, we've got a majority multifamily living experience in the city of Larkspur. And yet, the amount of diversity of folks who live here, it, it's on par with other communities around the size of Larkspur within Marin County. So I'll stop here and, and ask if there's any questions or comments. I don't have an answer for this. I would, I would love to hear from council members and commissioners on this, and also the public at large as we open up our website in the near future. I'm sorry, Mayor, it looks like you're muted.
I'm muted. Thank you. Never, never remember that. So this is our, this is our next stop point for questions and comments from the council. I see Catherine Way has a question.
Hi, Andy. I, I appreciate this data because I've always known we've had many multifamily residents. The fact that it's 52% is higher than I realized. One thing that would be helpful for me if, as we go forward to explain this to people is the amount of density we actually have in Larkspur. And I, I reflect on the fact that we have five and six story, maybe four to five story condominium complexes and apartment complexes in Larkspur Landing. We have multi-story on the Bon Air Hillside. And I, I don't think people, I think that would be helpful for, for people to know that they live among a lot of density now that they just don't really see because it's well planned. And right, and that, that's an opportunity for us to, to realize that there, there may be places. I don't know where they are yet. But what they've done in the development in the Larkspur Landing Quarry Site is to build against an already existing backdrop, which can create more density. And I think that's an important message for us to be able to elaborate on for the community. I've stood in Piper Park with people who are complaining about this housing element, and I pointed across the creek and look at all of the multifamily homes that are there. And even the, the Tamil pious, which is the tallest structure in Marin County, people are unaware of the density that's there. So that would be helpful for me in elaborating on this for the community.
Just to, just to follow on what Catherine just pointed out, most if not all of that high density, excluding Larkspur Landing, is in, is in the portion of Larkspur that's within the Greenbrier community as opposed to the rest of Larkspur. People always remember those, those distinctions, but on the Greenbrier side, we have a very significant existing multifamily community and have had since Greenbrier was developed. Any other comments or questions from the council or the commission?
Mr. Mayor, before Andy moves on, I just, I asked Allison to go ahead and post this presentation now up onto the website. There's a link in the agenda itself. So I, I know that Andy gave you a lot of data, and as you continue through this conversation this evening, you may want to refer back some of that data. So I asked her to make that available. You can download it as we go along.
Thanks. And I just actually had one, one quick kind of technical question. And I'm not sure which slide. I think the first time you put the slide up, this had, this had to do with the issue of how much income is devoted to housing. And you had a couple of different slides that, that related to that. I think the first one was 27, but then that got repeated again a couple of slides later. And I guess the question is, when you say 50% or 30% or whatever it is, is used for, for housing, what do you mean used for housing? So for single family residences that are owner occupied, that would be primarily, I guess, a mortgage payment. For renters, it would be their rental payments. Of course, folks who own their homes in Larkspur have additional, sometimes quite significant costs that they incur, and that the biggest one, of course, is property taxes. Are those, are those costs other than your basic mortgage payment and rental payments? Are they counted in this calculus?
That's a great question, Mayor. I, I'm happy to dig in to the metadata and discover that for you and get, get an answer back.
It would, it would be helpful because we, we do live in a very high property tax community. And for some people, particularly people who have owned their homes for a while, or even not for a while, the property taxes is actually one of the biggest expenses that they have. That's certainly true for me on an annual basis and maybe for others as well. So it'd be, it'd be interesting to know a little bit more detail about how these percentages are calculated. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I would think that if, if it's not calculated, then there would be fewer in the blue.
Yes.
Andy, this is Brock Wagstaff again. What I don't see in any of these charts is sort of an average. If, if you have that information, what the average income is of people in Marin. Because if you're making $500,000 a year, you may be paying a ton of money to your house, but you also are not, that's not a burden necessarily. So just, just a thought.
Commissioner Wagstaff, this is, this is the area media income right here in the yellow at the bottom. For a one-person household, it's 104,700. For a two-person, 119,700. Three-person, 134,650. And for a four-person household, the average median income is 149,600.
So the housing payments are, are a burden, to say the least.
And that's, again, that's, that's Marin County wide. That's not, those aren't Larkspur specific numbers.
True.
Do, do, do we have an, an ability to generate numbers, equivalent numbers for Larkspur in particular?
Not to my knowledge, but I will look that up. I will see if that is something that might be available.
Okay, then that might be helpful as we go through the, the process here. Any other questions from members of the council or the commission? In which case I think we'll end this pause point and continue on with the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Toggling here. Here we go. And our, our next section is to talk about site inventory. This is probably the most controversial and, and difficult piece of the puzzle here because we're, we're talking about spaces and we're talking about making changes to our built environment. And, and that can be emotional, especially in a period of time where we've all endured this shared trauma, which is COVID. And, and it can be a difficult time to talk about even more change into the future. But we're here to, to lead you through that process and to help it be as democratic and painless and maybe on occasion even a little bit fun. That's our, that's our goal. So these excerpts that you see here, part A, part B, and on the next slide, we'll see a couple of more steps. And this is all coming from HCD and, and their in sites inventory memo. So this is sort of our Bible as we go forward through, through the steps and discovering which sites are the sites that that will be most appropriate and chosen through the community process. So we'll be identifying some sites and we'll be looking specifically for sites to accommodate low and very low income. We'll be doing some capacity analysis and looking at non-vacant sites, which predominantly, my understanding so far of Larkspur, that's what we'll be focused on for the most part. And, and a determination of adequate sites as a final. So HCD has been clear about what's required for using fourth and fifth cycle sites. If we have a five, a fifth cycle non-vacant site, which is to say that there's currently either a building or even just a parking lot. If it's, if it's, if it's a site that is not a green site, then then it must be rezoned within three years to allow residential use by right with at least 30 dwelling units per acre for housing developments in which at least 20% of the units are affordable to lower income households. This is a really important point. So I'm, I'm spending a little time here.
You're giving us, I think you're giving us all pause to digest that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a big step.
And that's a requirement to rezone.
It is a require, if, if we choose to reuse sites. And on the next slide, I can remind you of the sites that were used in the fifth cycle. So in order to reuse any of these sites, it will be necessary to rezone. Keeping in mind, for instance, site five, that happens to be two parcels. So it, it may be worthwhile to consider 30 dwelling units per acre on the smaller site, on the smaller parcel. And maybe the outer parcel is not part of the site's inventory. That's just an example. I'm not suggesting that's where we're going to go with it. I just thought, since I've had a little bit of experience in Larkspur and understanding the sites that were used before, that's maybe an easy one to, to think about. Now, we have a robust team, as I mentioned, and we have some folks that are urban designers and architects, and they will be joining us through the process as we move forward. And they'll be bringing in some cursory economic analysis and, and some real clear understanding of, of urban planning and urban design. So we'll be in good hands through this process. We'll make sure that, we also have a graphics guru, I almost want to say, and she has had profound experience helping to graphically describe differences in density and and also how, how policy can make a difference on the ground with alternative strategies. So we'll be walking through this with you. We, we might be looking at sites first, but as much as we can, we're going to bring in graphics and we're going to bring in experts and, and open ourselves up for a whole lot of questions and comments and, and, and shared expertise. We're also going to involve the public because quite often it's the, it's the local knowledge of the sites and the community that bring forward, as, as Councilmember Way mentioned, some surprises that there may be places, there may be places that we haven't even considered yet. And while we won't be having, while we, not in the near future, a, a, a big community event like this in person, we have a program, it's called Balancing Act, that enables a similar feeling. And it's an exercise that allows everyone to take a minute and, and put themselves in the seat of the decision maker and come up with their own plan. And that plan can be as informed as we provide information on our website. Or it could be as informed as somebody is just because they've lived there for 20 or 30 or 10 or five years. So when I'm done with this presentation, I'm happy to show a quick demonstration of how this tool will be used. But we're, we're excited about the alternatives that can happen with this. And our goal will probably be to have some iterative mapping. In other words, at first we'll probably go very broad brush and just gather information. And then throughout our process, we'll continually have more mapping exercises. So as people get accustomed to the tool, it'll be a really easy way to communicate back and forth to hopefully not only those who have often been a part of these kinds of decision-making processes, but our goal is to also include those who haven't always thought that their opinion mattered. We're going to make sure that they have access and an ability to share that opinion. And then we have a really easy way to export out data from this so that you can see as decision makers and feel confident about what you're voting on as it moves through the chain of approval. So I heard a question earlier about SB nine and SB 10. Bottom line for SB nine, I just want to say that we're still waiting for for HCD feedback on how this might impact housing elements. But let's first talk about what SB nine is. It allows for the following options. You can have a duplex constructed on a parcel where there now exists a single family home. You can also divide a parcel as long as it's larger than 2,500 square feet with an ability for a duplex for each subsequent new lot. So you may have heard that SB nine allows four plexes. And that's how there, there is some mention in the law that if you're going to take this action of division and then for, and then duplexes on each parcel that you couldn't then also have ADUs. We have gotten some initial clarity on that. So as I said, we're waiting for HCD guidance for assumptions. And though early guidance from local experts suggests no more than 9% of existing sites will follow through with SB nine options. And I can, if, if this isn't getting into the weeds too much, and I hope this isn't too confusing, but often what we're finding in a community that once we do that math, that really kind of equates to the buffer that I was talking about earlier. So if there's not an appetite to do a buffer, it may well be that once we hear back from HCD and their guidance, it may be that SB nine is de facto the buffer that we would need. Again, that's sort of getting into minutia, and I don't want to present too many confusing pieces of information here. We'll move on to what is SB 10. So this is an optional. It's, it's, it's a choice for jurisdictions who want to streamline a path to zone infill neighborhoods for missing middle density. As I mentioned before, sort of like townhomes, also duplexes and quadplexes up to 10 units per parcel if they choose. So this isn't something that's required in the way that SB nine is. In, in other words, it doesn't just automatically apply. But this is a tool, and I just wanted to mention it early on because as we move forward and start talking about sites and opportunities, this would enable, if there was political will and community support for a site to be upzoned, there is now an ability for a site or an area, I should say, neighborhoods is, is how it's infill neighborhoods. If there ended up being an area where upzoning was preferred, this is something that could happen without a whole lot of investment in time and energy and public money. Oh, excuse me. So with that, I, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you for that. There's some lots of information to give for all of us. Pause. So I think I see Councilmember Candel with his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, and this may be a silly basic question, but these are all privately owned properties. We can do whatever zoning things we want to do, but if the property owner doesn't want to develop it, the housing's not going to get built. Is our response The housing's not going to get built. Is it our responsibility just to make it? Possible for housing to be built there? And if the property owners choose to or to not do this. Uh, that's not really our problem or are we supposed to do this in such a way that we give proper incentives? So it actually happens.
That's a great question. And, uh. We really do need to think about ways that this could be developed. That, that the plan could be developed. So incentives are an important piece of this when we get to talking about policies. We also, um, we know that, uh, HCD, depending on, on some sites and they have. Uh, if, if you take a, a minute to look at that memo. Specifically for sites that are, I'll just give an example. Sites that are less than a half acre or more than ten acres, those kinds of locations, there's. Increased due diligence that's required in order to include those sites. So we're, we're taking a proactive step and we're putting together a, a form. For property owners to submit if they have an interest in, in, uh, pursuing more. More housing units on their site or if they are considering redeveloping. So that we can have something that is, uh. Repeated and something that's standardized, I should say, so that then that can be something that. Factors into our, our site analysis. So if, if, um, of course, if you have a holdout. Property owner, as you're saying, you could do all that you want in rezoning. But if that property owner has no interest in redeveloping over time, maybe that's not the best candidate, right? But there's certainly others, in my experience, when there's a change in zoning. It sometimes is the sort of wake up call for property owners. If, if they've ever thought that they might want to develop over time. Once they know that there would be encouragement from the community and from the municipality. That is often the hindrance. The withholding that a lot of property owners, um, take on.
So yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. I, I just, I, I still don't really understand. So our, our responsibility. As, as the city is our responsibility to create the zoning that allows. For this housing to be built or is it our responsibility to actually make sure the housing is built? Have we met our responsibility if we change our, uh, our zoning so that we allow for the possibility of these. Needs to be built, but they never get built.
So, so the direct answer to your question, Scott, is we have to plan for it. We don't have to guarantee it gets built. That said, one word you've heard Andy use a lot tonight is the word streamline. The prevailing belief in Sacramento is that the number one barrier to the construction of housing is. Red tape and so, and process and NIMBYism. And so when he keeps saying streamline. What is now happening with housing law is increasingly. You're going to put these rules in place that say, yes, you can build here. And if it triggers one of these streamlining rules. In theory, those barriers are reduced. The ability of the developer to realize their vision. Is enhanced because they don't necessarily face procedural problems that they've had in the past. Now, I would submit. That probably across the whole state, that philosophy is true. I don't think it works as well in every community. Those of us who work in the trenches in Larkspur, for example, or in Marin know. A major barrier to housing in Marin is the cost of land acquisition and the cost of construction. And those variables aren't going to be affected one way or the other by anything that we do and any streamlining that occurs. But, um, the direct answer to your question is we, we plan for the units. We don't have to actually guarantee they get built.
Thank you.
Okay, is that, that, that it's got?
Yeah, that is perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Way, go ahead.
So in a bit of a follow up to that, Andy, um, are you finding that people are. Cities are working with not other jurisdictions like other cities. But other agencies that are within their own jurisdiction. And I'll give the example. Working within a, a school district that may have land that's within our jurisdiction. Like the corporate, as an example, the Corporation Yard for the Palopius Union High School District is in Larkspur. Are you also looking and identifying properties that could potentially be negotiated with? Entities like a school district to build housing there? Or is that out of this realm?
It's absolutely part of this realm and worthy of consideration. As I was, um. I, I, I don't feel like I'm eloquently describing this, but it's, it's a perfect example of. A, a place in the rules that requires added due diligence. In other words, we can't just point to it. We need to show that that agency has an intention to, um. To build and, and that, so there's numerous different ways that we could provide that. That due diligence to HCD that this is, this is actually, um, a, a reasonable expectation to believe that something might happen. Within this eight year cycle. And that can all be found in that HCD memo. It, but it's, it's a, it's a dense read. I, every time I read it, I, I learn something new. So I try to read it often.
Commissioner, counselor, your hands up.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor Harof. Yes, so have you done any, have been able to do any inter- informational interviews with, with developers to see? Well, how are they reacting to the possibility of having, uh, the density restrictions? Lowered, uh, in which case the, the high acquisition cost might be able, might be offset. By the opportunity to actually, you know, generate more, more revenue for that developer simply by virtue of having. More units on, um, on a given site where previously there might only be one unit. Have you been able to gather any of that information?
Well, uh, Commissioner, counselor, I, again, this is just a perfect question. One of the new laws that, that just rolled out, those seventeen new laws. That, um, that our governor rolled out about housing, one of them requires that an agency, uh, that a. That a jurisdiction have regular input from developers. Now, most of the jurisdictions that I've been working with, that is anathema. Nobody, the, the developers are thought of as, you know, the. The, um, the enemy. So there's trepidation and, and maybe for good cause in, in some circumstances. I, I get it. But I, I can tell you that in my experience, when I was working at the city of Monterey, we opened up, had a town hall. And, and we, um, gathered so much wonderful, good information that helped affect our inclusionary law. And you, when, um, so I'm, I'm certain that if, fairly certain. That if we were to open this process up to, um. For, for developers to feel safe, to share their comments and questions and concerns. You know, through the website and it could be an open public forum. That that could be very informative for decision makers when we come to making policy. If, if we're serious about having policy that will impact those who, who want to use it.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I, I do share the trepid, trepidation, however, the developers are. Are part of the economic reality and part of this puzzle.
And I, I have to say too, in my experience, often developers are more than happy to give quite a bit. If they feel welcome through the process. So that, um. They're often ready, willing and able to meet the community demands. If they, if they understand the rules and they, they can, uh. And there's clear expectations and predictability for, for what the process will be for them to actually build something.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from, from council? I just have one real quick one and it's, it's maybe a little. Off, off point a little bit, maybe. But having spent some time earlier in, in life, living in the state of Texas. Which does not have any zoning laws whatsoever. Doesn't even, so there's not, there's no potential for up zoning. They don't have any zoning. So the strategy that, um, that folks adopt there to accomplish the same kind of thing. Is a, a strategy of utilization of deed restrictions. So I guess my question is, um, if, if a property owner was looking at the prospect of. His or her property being upzoned or, um, somehow, um. Being used to create opportunities for development that that property owner doesn't ever want to see at that property. Wouldn't deed restrictions be, uh, a handy tool for that owner to defeat? All of this with respect to his property or property, property?
Oh, do, do you mean that we could meet our, our affordability numbers by?
We could meet, I, I guess my, my point is that we could meet our numbers, uh, in terms of planning. But the property owner could deed restrict the property to say that for eternity. Nothing will be allowed on that property other than X. You know, like the house that exists there now.
That's a good question for legal counsel.
Yeah, that's what I said. It's a little off, off, off the presentation, but, um. That may be a strategy that people, uh, start finding attractive when they feel that their property is maybe turned into something that they never anticipated.
I, I think from our pers- from the city's perspective, um. The one. Observation I would make is that, um, as HCD increases its scrutiny of housing elements. If it doesn't happen this cycle, then in future cycles, they may well look at. Um, opportunity sites that are designated in a housing element, but also look at whether or not there are legal restrictions that would actually. Result in less development than a city is claiming in its housing element. So while it may be effective for property owners, it may. Make it more difficult for the city to, um, effectively meet its state requirements.
Right, but that's not part of the current scheme, correct?
I, I don't know that, that, that HCD has issued any guidance about that to this point.
Okay, it's just, uh, like I said, it's a, it's a little bit off point on the presentation, but. I think there are a lot of folks running around the state of California right now, looking at. Things like that, that, um. Uh, as, as tools that they may, for better or worse. Try to use to defeat some of the objectives of this legislation.
Yeah, I'm mayor. I just wanted to add, just to respond to that. I mean, if I was a property owner and I added restrictions. It would probably put a DAPNO on the value of the property. So I don't know if it's going to be that attractive for property owners to do that and if this felt something very personal. And strongly. So I, I don't know if we're going to see it that much, what you're suggesting.
And then I don't know, I don't know that we will either. I'm, I'm just suggesting that, um. That is, that is a, a legal device that people could use if they wish to. To do that and they may have their own reasons that may relate to their property value or may relate, relate to other things. As well for those kinds of tools to be utilized. Again, this is kind of off, off, off point. I don't want to distract from the presentation. Seeing no other hands raised. Are we at the end of this part of the presentation or do we have a little bit more?
Just a little bit more.
Okay, good.
So project schedule and key milestones. We're in a bit of a rush and that's really because what we're needing to do is come up with a project description in time enough. For our sequoet team, um, and, and that's our environmental review team within EMC. To be able to do an EIR if, if it, if it. Becomes obvious that that is necessary. And depending on what our solution to, uh, this six cycle housing element will be, we may or may not need to do an EIR. Uh, so just to walk through our process, we'll be working with the steering committee. And we'll have community workshops, we'll be, uh, collecting data involving the community with that analysis as well as decision makers. Uh, and we'll be initiating our, and, and working through our housing sites inventory. We'll have multiple HCD check-ins. We'll have a review by Veronica Tam for AB six eighty-six as well as. Tyrone, who we met today. We're so lucky to have him on our team. We've got a steering committee review of the draft housing element and this is early on in the process. Earlier than it has been in the past because there's a new law, AB two fifteen. There's a lot of sentences we could begin with, uh, because there's a new law, we're doing this. But honestly, when I started putting, um. Project plans together, this was already part of mine. I, I like the idea of the public viewing our draft housing plan. Before HCD does and apparently so does HCD. So we will be releasing that to the public with a thirty day review. Following that, there's a required ten day. Uh, period for incorporating those comments from the public. We could take longer, but that's a minimum. So I, we're sort of aiming for early summer for all of that. And then, uh, we would, uh, and then we would work together to create a final housing element and that would incorporate then. The HCD comments and then we'll go to planning commission for recommendation, city council for adoption. And finally, hopefully, let's, uh, let's get that document to HCD for certification no later than January of twenty twenty-three. If you'd like to have more information about AB two fifteen, I did include this in the, in the presentation. The, uh, link to the information. So our milestone schedule, here it is at a glance, just for a visual. So that you can see that, um, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna head right into the sites inventory. I'm working closely with Neil Top on that and, um, I've already had a couple of, uh, multiple site visits. And, um, and now we're working together on a map that's provided through A Bag and it's a, uh, called a Hess map. And eventually that's going to be made public once, um, once we're, once, um. A bag and, and, uh, and we are certain that it has all the data in it that is ready for, um. Facing the public, um, it, it, it's a lot to, uh, put it all together. But meanwhile, we're using it, um. To come up with our sites. It's got a lot of data in it about, uh, environmental constraints and, um. Of course, all the zoning and general plan information, things like that. So while we're working with the sites inventory, we're going to keep enough, keep in mind some policy development concepts. But it's also, they, they're going to work hand in hand, but the sites inventory is going to come a little bit earlier. Because it's the sites inventory that really dictates whether or not an EIR will be required for our process. So then we have a housing element draft, as I mentioned, in summer that will be released to the public. Of course, we'll have some, uh, numerous public meetings ahead of that where, um. Where the community can comment and we'll have all kinds of data and information and interactive opportunities on our website. Then we'll have a final housing element and public hearings for, um, final adoption. And yes, that, that is the end of this section. If there are any questions, comments, clarifications.
Okay, is that a pause point or?
Yes.
So we still have a little more to go here.
Just one more section after this and.
Uh, any, anyone want to take advantage of our little pause here for, um, some questions before we go to the, to the final? Final mile here. Seeing no raised hands, um, why don't we go, go do that, Andy? Thank you.
Sure. Uh, so our public engagement process, we've already got this underway. Our goal is to inform, consult and involve the community throughout the process. And with that, we will be, uh, launching our website. Living in Larkspur will be the name of it. It's not accessible yet, but we're making sure that we have is, uh, some of the, the. Introductory language and lots of ways to get informed and to participate and we are making sure that we launch that in multiple languages. So, uh, numerous tools will be available, polls, surveys, photo preference, resource library where folks can. Uh, not only read documents, but also there will be an interactive component. So if while you're reading and you want to make a comment about something. Anyone would have the ability to just add that comment. And then in the end, we have an ability. To export all of those comments associated with each of the lines. So, um, we're looking forward to this robust. Community discussion and discourse. Uh, community discussion and discourse, and it will be in an organized way so that you as as decision makers. Will feel confident about the decisions that you make. We'll have some group forums and we'll have a mapping workshop, and this is an example of what our our mapping workshop map might look like. Um, it's getting late. I don't know that you want me to do a uh. An example of this right now, I could otherwise send um. A demo uh out and and Dan can provide that to everyone and we could put it on the website as well. It's up to you, but this is our final slide. So discussion topics, um generally, are there particular? Housing strategies uh that the cities should pursue to meet its affordable housing needs and Reno requirements? Are there ideas for increasing inclusion in our outreach efforts, and are there housing issues or concerns that should be addressed? And this this ends our our presentation. If if there are any comments. Based on these discussion topics or anything else that you would like more information about.
Okay, okay. Again, thank you, Andy, uh and your team for for this um. Interesting and thought provoking um presentation. Um, clearly, we all have a lot of work ahead of us. But with that, uh and I know we have a presentation, we want to hear from the county, and we also want to get. Uh, give the public an opportunity to respond to the presentation they heard so far. So I'll turn it back to the county. Um, with a one wanting to follow up on the specific questions in that last slide or on any other uh aspects of the presentation. Not seeing anyone right now, in which case I think we'll do what we set out to do at the outset before we turn it to the county. Uh, Allison, I think we're going to open it up to the public for any public comment or questions.
First comment will come from Kevin Carroll.
Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, good evening and uh very interesting presentation. I raised a lot of questions that I'll bring up later. At an appropriate time, but there's one question that occurred to me. Uh, that might come up and be relevant tomorrow night, and that is where we have the situation of a facility that was. Zoned, I assume, as a single unit. Uh, long-term care facility. If it's now turned into uh under Project Home Key fifty living units. Does that count on our arena numbers? And yeah.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thanks, I thank you.
Yeah, good. Anyone else in the public?
Moving for any further raised hands or email public comment. And there is no additional public comment.
Okay. Well, I guess that ends that part of the the tonight's uh program. And again, thank you, Andy, and and your group for. Uh, as I said, a very interesting and thought provoking um presentation and. Appreciate the opportunity to be working with you going forward in the future to help us solve some of these difficult housing related uh issues.
It's an honor to be here. Thank you.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
I don't think we're going to entirely let Andy leave too. I'm hoping he'll stick around just in case as uh, you know, what you hear from the county relates to to. Andy's work too, so.
But he's off the hot seat for now, right?
Yeah, yeah, he's off the hot seat for now.
Okay, good. All right. So I guess we're going to turn now. We have a a presentation from county representatives.
Yes, and I just want to uh thank the county for sticking in there. That was a a lot of information we did in our first presentation. Uh, now we're going to hear about some countywide initiatives that will help inform our housing element process and. We'll be hearing from Liz Darby, the Social Equity Program Policy Coordinator, and Gillian Zeiger, the County of Marin Senior Planner. And I'm going to turn it over to them.
Thank you so much, Dan. Um, I wanted to first just uh provide some more explanation for some of the questions that. Counsel and the Planning Commission had for Andy. I think it would be helpful. Uh, the first question was about the. Uh, addressing if we don't meet arena, if we don't have a certified housing element. Um, so HCD has actually created a new department. In the housing and community development, and the purpose of the unit is to hold cities accountable when they stand. In the way of housing production goals. Um, it's a twenty-five member team with a budget of more than four million dollars. And their task to enforce a series of state housing laws, like the Housing Accountability Act, Density Bonus Law, Surplus Land Act, so. Um, every city in town and unincorporated county is going to be under quite a bit of scrutiny there. Um, in addition to just going through the hurdle and passing our housing element, meaning arena. Uh, there was another question about transportation, and I just wanted to highlight the fact that. All of the consultants are actually meeting as a group, all the county consultants, to talk about how we're going to. You know, measure transportation impacts with TAM um through the EIR process. So we we understand that transportation is a regional issue, and we also um. Need to make sure that when we talk about transportation, that we address all of the populations um. In in that conversation, including people who are commuting here to work in the county and also the people who live here. So um with that, I just want to thank you all for letting us present here. I'm Gillian Zeiger. I'm a senior planner in the Housing and Federal Grants Division at the county. And I'm joined by my colleague Liz Darby, and we're going to discuss the countywide fair housing initiatives, including the restrictive covenant program. And uh we look forward to answering your questions at the end of our presentation. So take it away, Liz.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor and uh City Council members. It's. I feel very grateful that I'm here tonight. I want to give a shout out to Andy and his team for doing such a great job. I don't want to be duplicative, so I'm probably going to go through my assessment of fair housing aspect. Uh, affirmatively furthering our housing a little bit quicker, um, because I think it was well. Uh, but tonight I want to talk first about of the the county's restrictive covenants project, and I know some of you have already heard this before. But I think it's really important that we we talk about this in the context of the housing element. And the Marin County restrictive covenants program allows homeowners to identify any illegal or unlawful. Restrictive covenants in their property deeds and to assert that such covenants are illegal and inconsistent with the county's commitment. To racial equity for potential homebuyers. A covenant is a legally enforceable contract imposed in a deed upon the buyer of a property. Racially restricted covenants refer to legal agreements that prohibit the purchase, lease, or occupation of a piece of property. By a particular group of people and that prohibit homeowners from selling or renting to anybody of a specific race or ethnic background. The racially restrictive covenants project was created to educate and inform Marin County uh residents and homeowners. Of the history and the significance of discriminatory government policies and programs that created segregated communities. The project recognizes that these covenants continue to be in our property documents today. And provide property owners with an opportunity to proactively make a change in their um documents while acknowledging and recognizing that. These covenants are indeed illegal and inconsistent with Marin County values. And while these restrictive covenants were used throughout the country, it also has a very local story here in Marin County. Until the start of World War Two, there were very few African Americans living in Marin County. Then in nineteen forty-two, Marinship was created and workers were recruited to work at the twenty-four seven operation. A new community called Marin City was created to house some of these workers. And at its peak, there were twenty-two thousand workers working at Marinship, and sixty-five hundred of those workers and families lived in Marin City. Eighty-five percent were white, ten percent were southern blacks, and five were Chinese immigrants. Marin City was considered one of the most diverse racially integrated communities in the country. At the end of the war, military military veterans returned in droves, and there was a housing shortage across the country. Under the National Housing Act, the Federal Housing Administration guaranteed bank loans to developers. To increase housing across the country with one condition. The homes that were developed could only be sold to white people. White veterans and their families returning from World War Two were able to purchase homes with mortgages that were guaranteed by the federal government. Many homes in Marin in the late nineteen forties were selling for seven to eight thousand dollars. And in some cases, the monthly cost to purchase a home was less than what a family would pay to rent in public housing. The FHA also created a color-coded system based primarily on race to determine financial investments in a community. Color coding can determine whether your community received mortgage capital, financing for roads and sidewalks. Schools, banks, grocery stores, or whether your community would be locked in concentrated poverty. Neighborhoods outlined in green were considered the most desirable. Neighborhoods outlined in red or those that were redlined were considered hazardous. And although federal laws currently prohibit overt forms of discrimination in housing today. The forces driving residential segregation continue to persist in more subtle ways. These include single-family and exclusionary zoning policies and placing affordable housing in only low-resourced areas. Or low-income areas or communities of color while failing to construct affordable housing in high-resourced neighborhoods. Which are predominantly white. Racially restrictive covenants, as I mentioned, are are part of our history, and they have been an effective way to segregate communities. And stabilize property values for some white families, and the long-term effects of those discriminatory policies. Continue to impact communities of color even today. Homes purchased in Marin in the nineteen forties and fifties could be bought for seven to eight thousand dollars down, as I mentioned. And often with no down payments, with zero down payments. Now, according to the county's assessor recorder's office, the median home price in Marin County in August and September of this year. Was one point seven million dollars. The equity accumulated in those homes has enabled white families to pay for their college educations. And for the college educations of their children, they've had the ability to fund their retirements by second homes and homes for their children. And they've been able to bestow inheritances and create intergenerational wealth. Through the county's assessor recorder's office, residents are able to certify and affirm that illegal and racially restrictive covenants. Are unconstitutional and violate current laws and county values. Residents who own homes in the nineteen seventies or earlier are encouraged to check their covenants, conditions, and restrictions. Mentioned in their real estate documents to see if the language exists. If found, the property owner has a chance to file a public statement protesting the offensive passages. By filing a restrictive covenant modification. And if homeowners do not wish to submit the modification, but wish to acknowledge to potential homebuyers that illegal language exists. And that such language is inconsistent with their values, they can do so by submitting uh the language to the Community Development Agency. Who will provide certification that the um the existing language is in fact illegal. And since May, we've received a lot of requests and a lot of interest in this project. And a lot of people who want to learn more about Marin County's history and want to participate by sharing their stories and their reactions when they've learned about. These restrictive covenants. Our website allows people to learn about the project, to submit their deeds for modification, and it provides a wide variety of resources where people can learn. About this project. One of the goals that we have and we hope to do is by identifying individual properties. We will in Marin County begin to have its first mapping of the redlined areas of Marin County um during that uh that era. And we're currently working with some of our homeowners associations throughout the county to identify some of the some divisions. That have a lot of the restrictive covenants, and we're also working with the Marin County Office of Education to introduce this project into our schools. And as we're beginning to have community conversations about the housing element and the requirement to identify sites where housing can be developed. The restrictive covenant project provides some context as to why we are all required to address historic housing policies. While also informing our residents about existing segregated communities. Now I'd like to uh discuss California AB six eighty-six, which we've talked about a little bit before, so I may not spend a lot more time on this. Um, as but we refer to this as our affirmatively furthering fair housing.
Liz, Liz, before we go on to that, this is Kevin Haroff. I I just wanted to uh before we leave the the restrictive covenant discussion. Um, uh, first of all, I want to thank you very much for your leadership and the county's leadership in pursuing this issue. Um, this is an issue that is gone unnoticed and untouched for for way too long. Um, but I just wanted to clarify a little bit more of the mechanics of how you get rid of these covenants in your chain of title. Uh, you and I've had this discussion a little bit uh already, because the way in which you do it is a little unwieldy under current law. You actually have to go back and unless the rules have changed, I know there's proposed legislation that would would alter this. But traditionally, what's required is the property owner essentially to go up to the recorder's office. Uh, and do a deed research into all of the the entire take chain of title. Um, and find uh any place where there may be one of these restrictions in the chain of title. And then once you find it, you have to pull the document. Um, you have to uh get a magic marker. And you have to cross out the language in that document that is kept in the recorder's office. And then I think you also have to file something uh in addition to that. Um, but that's a, that's a, that's a kind of an unwieldy burden for private owners. Who sincerely want to get rid of these things, to have to go through the process of going to the recorder's office, doing that research. People who are not sophisticated doing title research. Um, and then and then and then figure it out, then get your magic marker out, cross out the language and and fix the problem. Um, and hoping you caught them all. Um, probably you did, but you know, you never know, and you got to look at all the documents in order to to find that out. There is legislation that I don't think is passed, but is proposed, that would transfer the responsibility of identifying. The existence of restrictive covenants in individual chains of title. Um, away from the property owner, but to a program that the county would be setting up and implement. Over actually, the recorder's office would be setting up and implementing over a period of time. Um, where the recorder's office would be going out and actually looking at all the all the properties of the county and the chain of title. Um, to identify um where those covenants would be, uh and then create the same opportunity to remove them. Doesn't really change the ultimate process that you have to for follow legally to cross them out and make the change. But at least it would be a way to avoid the need for private property owners to fix that. And I guess that's all a lead up to say it's 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 unfortunate that getting rid of these things, which are, I think, offensive to many of us on their face. Is still so complicated that we have to go through that kind of a process in order to accomplish it. I had hoped there would be a much more simple mechanism that could be available to people, which is to simply get a standard language that could be put in the chain of title. Um, to say that, you know, the per current property owner disclaims these, acknowledges that they're illegal. But that in and of itself would not be effective to take the covenant out of the chain of title. Is my my understanding correct on that?
Absolutely. Excuse me, I'm trying, just got started talking. And and that's the point. That's why we are giving um. Property owners to us, right? Want to go through the legal where it's really, excuse me, recorded in your deed. Um, and as you say, part of the chain of property um ownership. The more the the one going to um the Community Development Agency is much more symbolic. It acknowledges it's in there, so that if anybody comes to look at your property to purchase it, and we've had some instances when this has happened. They will, they will see right on top that the county has said, this document contains illegal restrictive, excuse me. Racially restrictive covenant language and that it is illegal and not enforceable. But that is, that is the reason why we give people both options. For some people, um, they've been able to go ahead and make that modification fairly quickly, but. As we talked to the the accessory course, the recorder's office, sometimes these things just they go so far back their handwritten. So it does, like you said, it's owners, it takes a very long period of time, and a lot of people don't want to go through that process, obviously.
Yeah, and the fact of the matter is, these covenants are illegal as a matter of state law, and they're unenforceable. Um, but you know, as long as they're in there without the magic marker rating them out, um, they're still in the chain of title and um. It would be, it would be good if we could have a, you know, you know, a rock solid way of just getting rid of them, but I don't know that that's legally possible.
I think this too, I'm sorry, I apologize.
They just didn't want to distract, but go ahead.
No, 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 AB fourteen sixty-six did pass, so it is going to be the responsibility of the recorder's office, but I don't think it takes. It goes into effect till twenty twenty-three. I'm I'm losing my ears. Also, my understanding is is um that it doesn't actually get. that it doesn't actually get, the recorded document also doesn't really take the language out. It just, it does an amendment because it's part of the historical record, so it doesn't actually get redacted.
Do the title companies have any responsibility in flagging this kind of language when there's a refinancing or when the property changes hands?
Great question. That was part of the discussion with AB sixteen, AB fourteen sixty six, because there was a little bit of finger pointing. The recorder's office thought the title company should have that. The title companies, you know, said that the recorder's office should have it. But yes, my understanding is title companies have access to a lot of this information. And so they could right now help you identify whether or not these covenants exist in your deeds. They do, but I think under AB sixteen, fourteen sixty six, it's going to be the responsibility of the recorder's office by all jurisdictions.
Okay, yeah, okay. But if there was a joint responsibility whereby the title company actually flagged the language
Right.
through the recording office, and then the recording office took the measure, I think that would be a fairly streamlined system.
But I don't think that's the way. I think there was some discussion about that, Commissioner. I don't think that's the way they ultimately ended up.
I think it's fair to say that the title companies didn't want to take on these responsibilities. Any other comments or questions from the council or the commission? And sorry to distract you from your presentation. I just wanted to clarify that because that's been a source of annoyance to me personally. It should be easier. Anyway, go ahead.
Thank you. And again, thank you for asking those questions. And I was just talking about fair housing and the fact that what we're talking about under AB six eighty six are fair housing laws, and people do confuse fair housing laws with affordable housing. And while they have a lot in common, fair housing actually are a set of laws. In fact, they're civil rights laws. And civil rights laws guarantee the rights of individuals to receive equal treatment and prohibits discrimination in a number of settings, one of which is housing. Under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty eight, it's illegal to discriminate in the sale, rental, and financing of housing and housing-related transactions based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, disability, and marital and familial status. Under California law, we've expanded the federally defined populations to include additional members of the protected classes. And housing, when we talk about fair housing, fair housing isn't limited to not discriminating against a population. It also ensures that all people have actual choice in whether to choose to live. Actual choice, which means the existence of realistic housing options. Protected choice, which means housing that can be accessed without discrimination. An enabled choice, which means realistic access to sufficient information regarding options so that the choice is in fact informed. So what is affirmatively furthering fair housing? Generally, it's having specific goals, and this is what Andy talked about before, specific goals and commitments that promote inclusive communities, that further housing choice for all, that address racial and economic disparities through government programs, policies, and operation, and applies to all public agencies and all activities related to housing and community development. So basically, six, AB six eighty six, requires all jurisdictions, including a Larkspur, to do a robust community outreach and engagement to perform an assessment of fair housing practices, to do an analysis of your sites for all, for housing at all income levels, and to identify the communities within your communities that are highly resourced and have low resources, and to create concrete and specific actions that affirmatively further fair housing. Community engagement, as Andy pointed out, is an essential component to the housing element, and each jurisdiction's responsibility to affirmatively further fair housing, we must do so early, often, and ongoingly. And most importantly, we must reach all economic segments of your population. As part of your outreach, you must ensure that there are translation services available. For most jurisdictions, that would be both English and Spanish. You should include community-based organizations in your area or CBOs, community-based organizations that some of your residents engage with or participate. All communication should be easy to understand by all residents and should not include a lot of government jargon or acronyms. And as we do our outreach, we should really consider how we engage your residents. We should ensure that our meeting sites are near transit, and transit is a big question about addressing disparities. One of the community assets that we look at when we do our work in affirmatively furthering fair housing is who utilizes transit and for what purposes, and do people have access to transit, right? And do they have access to transit in places where decisions are being made? Meetings should be held like this one is, outside of work hours, including evenings and weekends to facilitate participation. We should have, as you are during here, in-person electronic options for participation, certainly as we start opening up and public health orders change. And as Andy pointed out, your drafts of the housing element need to be made available in advance so that people have an opportunity to review and comment on it. Some strategies you might want to consider for our community engagement include creating focus groups, specific focus groups that provide a sample of views, thoughts, and ideas from specific populations. You can consider reaching out to your African-American population, your Latinx, Asian, or disabled populations, which provides you with an opportunity to deliver to deliver translation services and to hear directly from groups who are often not invited to or included at the table. And it allows for you to kind of get in touch with new groups on opportunities for future meetings. You should also consider reaching out to your community leaders, whether they're your HOA representatives or residents who already participate in community activities and invite them to help you coordinate meetings with their contacts. We always encourage people to engage your business owners and ask your business owners to engage with their employees. And also, we should consider reaching out to those who work in our homes and perform services around our homes. That can give you very helpful insight and a resource for identifying the challenges to working, living, and commuting to Marin. One of the essential components of AB six eighty six is the requirement that we all develop an assessment of fair housing. This assessment must consider factors that cause, increase, contribute to, maintain, excuse me, or perpetuate segregation racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, significant disparities in access to opportunities, including transportation, and disproportionate housing needs. This assessment must also include a summary of your fair housing issues and inform and prioritize specific goals and actions that relate to your analysis. The fair housing analysis, as we also mentioned, should inform you of where your sites are. And your site identification must assess whether the sites serve the purpose of replacing segregated living patterns with truly balanced living patterns. It shouldn't be limited to the identification of sites just in lower-income neighborhoods, but should incorporate all your projected housing development at all income levels. The site inventory must review your zoning policies, which Andy talked about before. And they should identify adequate sites that include rental housing, factory-built housing, mobile homes, emergency shelters, and shall make adequate provisions for the existing and projected needs again at all income levels. Most importantly, the analysis should not be limited to sites at low-income levels alone, but should identify the projected housing at all income levels to ameliorate existing patterns of any segregation or exclusion of members of the protected classes. The housing element requires the identification and the prioritization of those contributing factors that lead to specific goals and actions. And the housing element must include goals, policies that specifically have a schedule of actions during the planning period, and the actions must have a timeline, discrete steps, and measurable outcomes that have a beneficial impact and must reflect the results of your fair housing analysis and must, again, meet housing needs at all economic levels. So in sum, California AB six eighty six means we must address significant disparities in housing needs and in the access to opportunities. Replace segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living patterns. We must transform racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity, and we must foster and maintain compliance with civil rights and fair housing laws. And we must be intentional about doing this, about replacing segregated communities with truly inclusive communities and not those that benefit some and burden others. And finally, affirmatively furthering fair housing really means transforming racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity without the fear of discrimination and displacement. The county has been working in a effort affirmatively furthering fair housing for a number of years, and we've learned a lot, and we've learned how to understand and implement these in some of our communities as well as making some really meaningful impacts in terms of our goals and specific outcomes. And we always start with the data, and we let the data tell the story. And Andy did share some of this, so I'm going to go quickly. But here's a sample of the data you'll be receiving from Andy that is produced by HCD. So if we take a look at this, overall, Larkspur's population has increased. It has become more diverse in the last twenty years. The number of American Indians, Asians, and people who identify as multiple races and the Latinx population has increased over time, while your African-American and the white population has decreased. On the other hand, Larkspur is less diverse than the county as a whole and in the Bay Area in general. But Larkspur's population tends to be more diverse at the younger age, which can provide you with an opportunity to plan future housing needs for a more diverse community. And in some areas, Larkspur leads other communities in Marin in diversity, one of which is in your housing stock, and I think this was pointed out earlier. More than, close to sixty percent of your housing stock is not single-family housing, right? And Larkspur is one of the few communities in Marin to actually increase the housing number of housing units in the last twenty years. As for overcrowding, you can see renters are much more at risk of living in overcrowded conditions than homeowners. And while the vast majority of homeowners in Larkspur live in three-to-four-bedroom homes, your renters occupy a wide range of housing types, with the vast majority including families living in zero-to-two-bedroom units. And this is what Andy pointed out, and this is why this is really important. As we begin to have our community conversations about who lives in affordable housing in Marin, it's important that we highlight that a family of four in Marin County can earn up to a hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars a year and qualify for affordable housing or a Section Eight voucher. It's extremely important to identify and clarify who we're really talking about, about living in affordable housing, because this should help inform residents and challenge kind of existing stereotypes or assumptions about who is and who will be living in our communities. Now, at this point, I always ask everybody to kind of pay attention to that area medium income, which is that last line on the screen. We're going to get to it in a second. One thing we want to always point out is the average rent in Marin County in the last ten years has increased by ninety-one percent. And yet, during that same period of time, incomes in Larkspur have increased by only twenty-four percent. Looking at the area medium income, which is that bottom line that I talked about before, we see that households at all races in Larkspur earn more than a hundred percent of that area medium income. And there are households of all races in Larkspur who own their homes as well as rent. At the same time, when we look at housing affordability, you know, according to HUD, households should not exceed thirty percent of household income. And the question that came up before is whether or not that includes your taxes or not. As you can see, including taxes or not, which I think is a good question, most people are still paying more than thirty percent of their household income in the low-income range level. Because that means for a household of one, monthly household cost should not be greater than two thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars. Or for a family of four, it shouldn't exceed thirty-six hundred and fifty-nine dollars a month. Taking a look at these local employment figures, and these are in Larkspur in Greenbree, the sense is that most residents are spending more than thirty percent of their household income on housing. And again, this is very general data that HCD and Andy will be presenting to you in much more detail so that you can analyze it as part of your fair housing analysis. And at this time, I'm going to pass it back to my colleague, Jillian.
Thanks, Liz. So in late twenty twenty, ABAG launched its Regional Housing Technical Assistance Program. And as part of that program, ABAG has given funds to each county to work collaboratively on the housing element. So given the newness and regional nature of the fair housing work, as well as Liz's recent successful completion of the analysis of impediments, a large portion of the scope is dedicated to the fair housing work. The countywide website, which is housingelementsmarin.org, is a place for everyone in the county to keep track of each jurisdiction, you know, each city and town's outreach, timelines, documents, et cetera. And as consultants are hired at each of the jurisdictions, the website will be updated more frequently. So if you're unsure if you live in a city or town or unincorporated county, there's a locator so you can type your address. So if you think, I'm not sure if I live in Larkspur or Greenbree, you can type your address in to see where you live and then use the website to go to the county's website or Larkspur's website. And part of this program is also dollars for translation services, including document and live interpreters. So once Andy and the team have more demographic information, they will be able to figure out who they're translating the documents for and who needs translation at meetings. And some of those dollars will be covered by ABAG. And the county has also hired Veronica Taman Associates. I think Andy referenced their firm previously to conduct the fair housing work. And she'll start by providing analysis maps that actually have already been provided to Larkspur that will assist each jurisdiction in strategizing outreach, similar to what Liz discussed earlier. The consultant will also provide demographic information that will inform your town's housing element narrative. The consultant will also analyze the town's site list to make sure it meets the requirements for affirmatively furthering fair housing. And finally, they will review our meaningful actions or specific policies and programs to further fair housing. So with that, we are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, I'm unmuted. So thank you, Jillian and Liz, for that presentation. Very, very helpful and informative and reflects a lot of work and access to resources that will come in helpful to us as we go through our housing element process. So at that, I think we'll open up to any comments or questions from the council or the commission. Councilmember Wyatt.
Hi, Liz. Nice to see you again. I know it's early in this process, but are you seeing any of these restricted covenants coming in from Greenbree and Larkspur at this point?
You know, I apologize. Sorry. So we have seen, we had some inquiries. What we think and what we suspect, actually, what we know, councilmember, is that there are subdivisions, right? We know that in Greenbree and Larkspur. And so we are hearing from people about how they can coordinate and do this. There's a couple of strategies, including, Liz, why don't we just hire somebody and map out the subdivisions and see if we can just kind of do it in MARS, right? So that's a strategy that we're looking into. But yes, there are definitely subdivisions, and we have one in particular in Greenbree that it looks as if there's a lot of restricted covenants. As part of that.
Yeah, I'm just, I think it's curious historically because when the Archdiocese of San Francisco sold six hundred and eighty acres to create the Greenbree Ranch, to create the Greenbree subdivision, I'm just curious as to whether there was anything involved that way. But I'm sure that Schultz family may have some of that documentation, but it's just a curious historical thing for me to find out because they own that entire ranch, which was then turned into the subdivision that we know now.
So right. And you know, it's so interesting that somebody actually has done a lot of the work and they gave that to me. So I actually have the names of the original owners. It's pretty fascinating. It just takes a lot of work to get into, but we certainly know that there's interest there to kind of, and and to to open it up.
And then last, and then lastly, I know that the book that you cite or the one of the images you cited was from the book The Color of Law. And I that was a book choice for the Marin mayors and council members to read many several years ago. I I just think that if you have the opportunity to share that resource, that The Color of Law, it was a very eye-opening book that I read in regards to what the redlining history was of Marin County and done by, and I can't remember the professor's name from.
Richard Rothstein.
Yeah, Richard Rothstein. So for those members of the community who are still with us at this late hour, The Color of Law is a really exemplary book that shows an example of what Liz has been talking about, particularly with Marin City and the development of that community.
Thank you, Catherine. That's very helpful and very important. And you're absolutely right. That is an incredibly important book that has really kind of shifted all of our visions of of housing. It's all the housing policies of our of our of our past.
It opened my eyes. Let's just.
Mine too.
Hey, Catherine, Heather Gardens has covenants. The deeds in Heather Gardens all have racial covenants in them. I don't know if you're aware of that.
Didn't I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, they do.
It doesn't surprise me, Jeffrey.
Yeah, they were all built, you know, for workers for Marin ships. And one of the things they did in Larkspur, Heather Gardens, that was our first house in Larkspur. And so when I was reading the the documents, I was like, what the heck is this? And the real estate agent said, yeah, all the houses here in Heather Gardens are have covenants that are not for obviously illegal, but they're still on the books there.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. That's great. I mean, that will help with our mapping project.
Yeah.
And just to just to clarify, again, I would endorse the comments made about the The Color of Law book. It was a, it's very worthwhile read. And it's just the the comment about different subdivisions is important. There are lots of subdivisions in our community. Greenbree is not a single subdivision. Green Bay is comprised of, I don't know, what, eight or nine different subdivisions, something like that. And each of them technically have their individual CCNRs, which are similar but not identical. So if you've seen a CCNR from a copy of a CCNR from one of your neighbors, that may not be the CCNRs that are applicable to your home. So it's important to go and look at your CCNRs, because that's where some of these restrictions pop up. But they can also be in your deed. It can be in the CCNRs. And if you're like me, I didn't get a copy of my CCNRs twenty years ago when I bought my house. I got a summary, and that's useless. So it's it's a it's a challenge to dig into this issue of restrictive covenants because they vary from community to community, and they are they're sneaky, and you got to hunt them down. Any other comments?
Also, if you would mind, I'm just adding and house to house, right? Within a subdivision, one house will have it in the house right next door. It may not. So that, like you said, it's tricky.
Yeah, it is definitely tricky and a challenge. But now the county's going to take care of it. The recorder's office is going to take care of it all for us.
When it goes into effect.
Which will take will take at least ten years, I imagine. Any other comments from the council or the commission? Seeing none, I think we'll open it up to see if there are any comments or questions from members of the public.
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members, any email comments? And there's no public comment.
Okay, well, that's good. Great. Thank you. And just as a matter of technicality, I think we kind of lumped together item number three point one and three point two in the course of our presentation, but I think we've we've entertained public comment on presentations on both of those items. So unless there are any other comments, questions, thoughts about the topic, this has been eye-opening in various respects. And as I said before, we've got our work cut out for us here in this community. So unless there's anything else from the council, we'll go to agenda item number nine, which is adjournment. And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
With a motion on the table and a second, I will accept the consensus of the council and will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.